Everybody seen a copy of the amendments from the previous session? Are there any corrections or additions to those?
No.
I make a motion to approve the amendments, that's significant. Second?
I'll second.
One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yes. Either approval of the claims, I think everybody's looked at the claims, are there any motions to approve the claims?
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Ready?
I made a motion to approve.
All properly signed. Were they all properly signed?
Yes. Second?
Second. All those in favor? First order of business is the motocross contract. We... Hold on. Let's do that. You see it personally, it's signed.
Turn it over on the back, right?
The motocross contract that we had last week, or last month, there was some discussion about whether it was to be the county, the city was to be paid their ten percent off the gross, or off of the net, and we've had the agreement rewritten, that was really supposed to have been off of the net to start with, and we've had it rewritten to work that way. So I need a motion to, if it's agreeable with the council, to do that.
I make the motion to accept the motocross race contract, revisit it for ten percent net.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Next on the agenda is the golf cart amendment for the ordinance. Linda has that. I said I didn't have any, anything in it, whatever the council wants to do with it.
Would you guys like me to read what we want to amend, or not?
Yeah. Don't worry, we'll always watch it, don't change.
Okay. We just, what we wanted to do was change this. I'll read it, and then if you have any questions, we'll get an answer. Whereas the City Council of the City of Linton, Green County adopted ordinance 2010-01, establishing permit fees for golf carts, and whereas the ordinance does not address short-term passes to be used by visitors, and whereas the annual renewal fee has been reconsidered. Now therefore, be intervened by the City Council of the City of Linton, Green County as follows. The annual fee for renewal of an unexpired permit shall be twenty-five dollars. A visitor is defined as a person who does not have a Linton, Indiana residence address. The visitor for a three-day, three consecutive day pass may be purchased by a visitor and will be considered a visitor pass. The cost of the visitor pass shall be fifteen dollars. Ordinance 2010-01 is ratified and confirmed in all respects, not inconsistent with the above. Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask, or... Tony?
Comment, please.
Okay.
I understand what we're trying to do there, this is just my opinion. When we first started the golf cart service, what, we had it two, three years now?
Two years, and this was starting our third year.
Okay. When we done it, we had different people come to the council, whatever it took to get a permit to use their golf cart. At that present time, everyone was having the fifty-dollar yearly fee. I understand, they don't want to renew it, but after the very first year, we had certain people come back and wanted us to cut it in half back then after one of one year wrote. My opinion is, you know, we've got the fifty dollar renewal on it. I have not had one person call me wanting to reduce the price, or complain about it. I just don't think we should reduce the price on it, you know? We've got a set of fifty bucks renewal. I agree with the three-day pass of fifteen dollars. Now, we start reducing prices, nice thing, you know? They won't reduce rates, going to shut around. They were already at the limit. My opinion, it's within the fifty dollars.
I, oh, I just wanted, when, when I, Troy Gerald's worked a lot on this with me, to get this first initiated. I think we worked about six months, going back and forth, changing stuff, doing this, doing that. Initially, I wanted it at twenty-five dollars. We finally got it wrote, it was probably my fault, it got put in at fifty dollars. At that time, I was just absolutely tickled to death to get a golf cart ordinance passed. I guess I maybe kind of just got wore down. Anyway, I thought, okay, got it signed, the next year, I'll attempt to get it reduced. That didn't happen. And, and so some people have, and I told them, I told people with golf carts that I would continue to try to get it reduced. That's what I've done, like I said. If you want to blame someone, I initially wanted it at twenty-five dollars, but like I said, the time I got the golf cart ordinance, the time we got it wrote, rewrote, passed, the fifty-dollar amount, it was batted around, and it got put in there, so I guess I can take the one for the fifty dollar. I mean, I know the other council passed it, but...
Wasn't the first time when they came to ask for a reduction, we put thirty-five dollars in the contract?
It was, we either said thirty-five or twenty-five. I hadn't, we hadn't made the decision yet.
And, I don't know, we did walk roughly a hundred carts?
Think a little over a hundred.
Did we do about a hundred carts? Troy?
Just right under.
And, and I just have a question, all that, that's roughly, let's say, five thousand, give or take.
Right.
Right? Did you use the money at the police station for things that you needed up there? The money stayed there?
The money is used for signage, for the golf carts, if it needs, if we need signs, and equipment, yes.
So, I mean, if they use it there, I'd like to see if it's in the park and recreation department myself. They don't think you can use it for, to save there, that's roughly five thousand dollars to buy his equipment, unless they're going to go from five, up to down to twenty-five hundred. I mean, just my, whatever the council wants, that's my opinion. I honestly think, well, it's the same, people just pay.
Any other discussion?
I make a comment.
Sure.
You know, we've been in the golf cart business for a while, and, and I wanted you guys to do this a few years back, I'm glad that you did. I have heard the complaints about, especially when I first got started, that, oh, it was pretty steep, fifty dollars. Granted, if you've got enough money to buy golf carts, you should have enough money to pay for the, pay for the, you know, but also, you know, most of the people that are buying the golf carts are aging groups, older, older people, it's not kids, it's not people that's sometimes got a lot of money. And I think that with what the DNR does on the four-wheelers and such, and we're talking like, the first time shot at fifty dollars, correct? And then twenty-five dollars after that, if you do not renew your, then it's, you start all over. So in other words, if you think, well, I'm going to slip by a year and not buy a, a cart from it, then I will, you know, I'll just pick it up next year at twenty-five dollars. No, that's, that's not the case. I think it gives them a little bit of incentive. Again, it's, it's turned out to be good money for the city, I know, or for the police department, and, and, and they bought some stuff out of it. But I have heard in, in the past, by people coming in, you know, saying it's a little, it's a little steep compared to other places around. But then that would also put, at seventy-five dollars in the DNR pass, seventy-five dollars for three years, actually, we're going to be still higher than the DNR passes for the four-wheelers. So that's, that's kind of my opinion.
One more comment, please. You're talking about that for like the bowl, wherever you go.
Yeah.
That's on good golf carts, I use this, and myself personally, I have a paddle fishing boat. Every year, I have to take the license branch, I take the same price, license branch, for that, doesn't matter what the year is. If I only go to a certain lake, it costs me twenty dollars for another lunch permit that I have to buy. I know it upfront, it's never been lower than since I started, but I know that's what it's going to cost me if I want to use my boat.
Well, I know if I could take a golf cart somewhere else, then I would be responsible to pay for wherever I, wherever I would be. So if, you know, if I went to Wethering, to New Linton, or wherever, I'm going to have to pay everything too, just like you have to pay your lawyer.
I understand that. But I'm saying they never reduced it, Troy.
Yeah, I understand.
I just, on this visitor pass, there was a question about why we wanted three consecutive days. If you want to get a visitor pass, and you want to come, when you get your visitor pass, you go to the police station, and you prove your, show them your driver's license, and you show them your insurance card. Three days, it's kind of, you know, won't expire, but if you buy a visitor pass, you want to use it once in May, then you want to come back to the music fest and use it. That insurance could be expired by then, we would never, we, or the police would never know that. So that's the reason we wanted it, the visitor pass to be for three consecutive days, not just three days.
Do they have to have their cart, in fact, with the same safety features with ours?
They should be, right?
They should. Mainly thing to, getting back on this, you, it wasn't such an idea about the money for this deal, as it was to secure for the city. So we were not, so everybody understood they had to be licensed. They, they, and they were supposed to have license and all the stuff to make it, and have your insurance and such. To me, that, I'm more interested in, than the money situation of this. Because if we had people that brings in carts from other areas, I think it would be, you know, they'll, they'll get a set of the things, and they're going to be responsible. If they get, if they get hit, or they have an accident or such, we don't want, you know, they should go by the city's rules. And, and if we don't have that spelled out, and have them sign it, so they understand it, they could say they come from wherever, Illinois, and they come here and say, well, gee, we didn't under, we just didn't understand that. Well, now, now you do, you know?
So they'll have, they'll have to show why they're doing it.
Yeah.
Tony's question to Troy, do the visitors coming into those golf carts, are they inspected the same as ones permitted on a yearly basis?
Well, we've not done that yet, so we, I would think that they should be, they should be...
I guess, I guess my question, Mr. Merritt, is like, I live in Denver, I come to London, I didn't throw that golf pass. Where's your golf cart? What in Denver? Can I just give them a permit?
No, no.
What about Denver?
I mean, in my opinion, I think they need to be inspected like everyone else's. Bring them out on a trailer, or something, you know, whatever.
Because they're not going to drive it from Denver.
Right, that's one thing.
Yeah, but also have to show them the proof of insurance, and also they understand the rules that we've got, you know?
That you have to have the drivers, you know, you can't have a teenager driving the golf cart.
That's right. That is the situation that has been brought up.
Good. Troy?
I have a question, if I may. Let's say I live in Linton, and I have a golf cart, and I use it around my lake. But Music Fest, or Fourth of July, or something, I would like the ability to buy a three-day permit. Why couldn't I?
Good. Sure.
One of the stipulations, I was asking about the challenge.
That was one of the things. Because that's what we, that was one of the things we, that we discussed, was that, and I'm going to use David, just because he lives just a little bit off of city limits, and he didn't want to buy a golf cart, a fifty-dollar golf cart pass, and the twenty-five dollars. But he does have a Linton address. We were still, in my, the way I understood it was, you, as long as you had a Linton address, you bought a fifty-dollar initial pass and a twenty-five-dollar reoccurring pass every, that was, that was the way it was worded, and the way it was worded was, so you, so the Linton residents, I guess that's...
Is that the way this is, where you live in Bedlam?
You don't have a Linton.
Hold on a second. Bill, if you don't want to go in the back.
I think what you're going to run into, people's going to come up here and want that three-day pass, they're going to come up here on Monday, the day the three-day passes start. The police are busy, but traffic around town, because of the music fest, whatever, that person's going to want that cart inspected. They're not going to have anybody standing up, I don't think, just waiting for somebody to go in there to golf cart, to inspect it. So probably half of that, that three-day, or that first day, is going to be gone, waiting to get the cart inspected. Plus, the police are going to have to inspect it, and you was hollering about having some, spending so much time inspecting them the first time, for, when people want the fifty dollar, the regular permit. Now they're going to do all that same inspection for fifteen? I don't, I think fifteen will cheat, myself, if you value Troy's people up there, if you value their time and anything. What do you think? I just don't think, how many times you go up there, please, you need a policeman, they got to call somebody in to, to do something for you, so I'd say, going to work on carts same way?
Thank you, sir. You guys ready for... Okay, last comment, Bill. Third question.
There's more to it than just the fifty dollars to a golf cart. You also got, also got to turn around and buy insurance, and that's seventy-five dollars more.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I entertain the motions.
I make a motion, we adopt the, the amendment to ordinance number 2010-01, amendment section four, ordinance establishing golf cart fee.
Last second. Jason Second. All those in favor of the motion? Three, four, four.
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five.
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 Twenty-five. Renewal, twenty-five. The initial would be fifty, and renewal would be twenty-five. That's less, fifty. The initial is fifty dollars.
Yeah. Twenty-five.
The motion, the motion is for twenty-five, if you want for twenty-five, hopefully.
Yeah, all those in favor of the motion? It's, it's fifty and twenty-five. Okay? Three, four? Close? Tony? Abstaining?
What are you doing, Nigel? Abstaining? Are you voting no?
I'm voting no.
Okay.
I thought it was twenty-five.
Okay, but it was twenty-five. Okay, it was, it was majority, the, the motion carried, it was three to two. Motion passed.
No, I think we've fairly shrunk out a lot.
He's two and a half, but yeah, one for the...
See how he did.
No.
Next on the agenda, special presentation. Jathan Wright. Jathan?
I'd like to ask Dick Goodman to come up to the front room. A few weeks ago, it was brought to my attention that there was some trash laying in the tri, by the Yule Like Linton sign on the west side of town. It was a rainy day, I noticed it myself, and the next day, I noticed it was gone. I really didn't give it a thought, to who picked it up. A few days later, it was brought to my attention that you were out there in the rain and cold picking it up. So I just wanted to, on behalf of the city, I wanted to thank you, and give a certificate of appreciation, and for having pride in our community.
Thank you very much. I really do have pride in you. I'm littering is not for the untrained professional, quite frankly. But I do go at it, this was the first time, I, I've driven past that trash, just like a lot of people have, and we're still doing it, you know? We've got to do, we've got to have a more active situation going for the litter on the streets. It's, it's disrespectful, quite frankly. Has everybody in here seen somebody throw trash out? Have you ever done that? Have you really?
I've paid the...
Because I've lived, I've lived on the highway, I'm a veteran unlitterer, I live on the highway. And everybody out there is a veteran at picking up trash. But quite frankly, it's been a rare, rare thing that I ever see whoever comes by my house at least once a day, and throws something out. They're like a, a human cart, okay? Because they know it's wrong. And it is disrespectful, that's quite frankly, what's going on, you know? And it needs to be something that I think the city, or people like me, or whoever, we can address that actively with groups that can do something about it. So that's my thought on it, if I had one, and I did.
I know a lot of things like this go unseen, and we didn't want that to go that way this time, and stuff, and I know there's others that do so, but we wanted to show our appreciation, so thank you.
What really bugged me about that was, it's all right under the Yule Like Linton sign.
Thank you.
Here, thank you very much.
You know, if every one of us can stop when we drive by trash, and do what Dick did, Linton would be a much cleaner place to litter. And we do appreciate it, Dick, so, thank you. Next on the agenda is the saddle club ordinance. We tabled that at the last meeting, on the lease with those folks. Myself and a couple of council members met with a group of the saddle club members this past week, and discussed with them some of the things that, that we thought should be changed out there. We came to a verbal agreement, that we would go ahead and, and renew the lease for another year, and they're going to do some things that we asked them to do, and I think there's lack of communication on, on part of it, that we're, we're going to try to work with the saddle club, and next year, in January, when it comes due, when it will be renewed, if these things haven't been met, then we're, we're going to address the, the lease again. But as of now, we met, and we're, the two council members and myself are in agreement that we renew the lease for one more year. So I would entertain a motion to, to that effect, to...
I'll make a motion, and we agree to this.
Fred?
I'll second.
Nigel Second. All of those in favor? Okay. Something else on the agenda, the ADA, the American Disabilities Act, last meeting, we appointed Tim Turpin as coordinator for that. That's going to be a fairly sizable project to do. It's mandated with the federal government that we have it done by the end of this year. I've asked Jathan Wright to serve on that with, with Tim, to help him, and we're going to need some, some volunteers. Tom Fisher has volunteered to, to work on it, and if anybody would like to work with these folks, well, we'd be glad to, to get you to work. If anybody would like to volunteer, we're going to have to, to list the properties that the city owns in town, and, and the parks that we have, sidewalks, and the streets, and there's a lot of, just a lot of paperwork and things that's going to be done. Anyway, Jathan's going to help with that. In fact, our different council members are taking up different, different jobs this year, friends own parks, and owners of lighted properties, and different ones are doing different things. So anyway, Jathan's going to help with that. Department heads, any, Troy, you, you guys have any, or the board, the head's, it's back there?
I just got a couple things, real quick, Merritt. First off, the... Tony? First off, getting ready for National Night Out again, cheering back up for that. It'll be August the seventh this year, and it'll be out to park again. Kids' fair is still joining in with us, just like last year. We're in pre-preparation plans now, and also in, of course, always putting in grants and things of that nature phase. As far as the police department, we took about, probably, five-hundred-and-forty train calls to the dispatch for transactions, such as anything from suspicious people, to drug investigations, to, I had ninety-seven traffic stops since last month, that's all from February. And at the last school board meeting, safety meeting that I was at, they requested that I ask the, the council if there is a chance or a possibility of making Seventh Street Northeast, at least on one side, no parking. And the reasoning to me was, is that it's tough to get the buses through there sometimes when they're parked on each side, and it, you know, pretty close to, you know, pretty hard to squeeze a bus through there sometimes. That was the reason, I told them I would bring it up to the council, and let you all decide, so...
Which street was that, Troy?
Seventh Street Northeast, north of the highway. And I think it's the, is it that jog there that causes the...
I think so, yeah.
And I think where that jog is on the, what is it, probably D, probably around D Street, where it makes like a little jog, I think, kind of bottleneck's in there, and it's definitely the best. So anyways, I just told them I would, they asked me to bring it up here at the council meeting, and I told them, well, this is...
That would be six, right, wouldn't it?
That'd be six.
Sixth Street.
The Seventh Street jog is the Seventh Street.
Oh, they're right around that area.
Seventh Street.
Well, Seventh Street I know is the one.
Seven of the bus drivers are very close.
Yeah, Sixth Street is the one with the jog, but Sixth Street's the one they're really close to.
How far do they want us to count for this? All the way? The whole?
What they did up on, what they did up on Eighth Street... One of the bus drivers talking to Troy about it, so...
Seventh Street, Troy, how far, the whole street?
I, you know, I'm not real sure, I'd have to ask them, but it's my understanding they run it all the way to H, so...
E.
Or is it E?
He comes out, he comes out on E.
I guess it would be just E then, so...
Once you find out for sure, and I'll have, I guess Tim would be the one to look into that, wouldn't it, the street department? Find out for sure and get back to them, we'll have Tim to take a look.
Rodney's got something.
Hey, John, on Eighth Street, what they did there a few years ago, they put no parking on the north side from Monday through Friday from like seven to four. I mean, it don't need to be on the weekends and all no parking, if they could just put something up like that and...
What the residents got to do?
Well, I know, but...
Do them park on this, is that the only place they have for harks?
That's a problem.
Well, most of them probably is, there's nowhere else to park. I mean, I was at the hospital, I was, you know, I was asked by the safety board to bring that up, so...
Okay, we'll look into it.
Okay.
I'll have, I'll have Tim to look into it.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Anybody else? Brad?
So far this year, the fire department, we've made 167 calls. As of this morning, I'm sure we've done some more today. Ninety of those have been ambulance transports, just kind of let you guys know where we're going with on the ambulance, through the rescue. Eighteen of them were fire calls, eleven of them were motor vehicle accidents, the rest were kind of mixed in, Signal Nine or S L R, Just Disregards, basically good intent One of the big things I wanted to mention, that we wanted to mention in the last meeting, but somebody got in a hurry to get us out of here. We, we had some cordless equipment, cordless tools donated to the fire department from Gregor Post. Really appreciated them doing that, it's going to help us out a lot and a lot of education. And there's a few other things we got. We helped Hoosier Energy, Mayor, they had a water main break, so we took 600 feet of water hose over for them, five inch hose. They were on the edge of shutting the plant down, so they really appreciated it, but just let us, let you guys know we're in their debt. Last Saturday, had a field booth over at the firehouse, had all the kids out there doing fundraisers for Southern Indiana tornado valley. We raised over $1,700, so kind of proud of that. We've got an account set up at Regions Bank, if anybody wants to make any donations, I don't know when we're going to take it down to them, I was going to get with John on that and we'll be sometime set up. But we've also been accepting prom dresses, and we've raised, we've brought in almost 150 prom dresses just from our community only. So, pretty overwhelming, let us know what kind of community we really are. Also, I'm going to be getting with Tim Turpin, we're going to start planning sidewalks here just in the downtown area. I'm going to get with Tim, and so he can run the street sweeper, same time we did the sidewalks, so we're not working against each other. And that's all we got. Yeah, we did. Out of those runs, there was one cat that we rescued out of the tree also. And that's no lie, we really did that.
Thank you, Brad.
I didn't want you to forget.
Yeah, I want to thank Brad, you the other morning, the other morning when they had those tornadoes down there, and I called Brad, the first people that you think of are first responders, because they have a network, I mean, they're, they're close knit people. And instead of just setting up a booth or trailers and taking in whatever, I called Brad, he called down to the folks down there and asked what they really needed, and it was trash bags and gloves and money. And anyway, the Linton has really responded to that. And then the guy called me about the dresses, and we set that up at the fire station, but Linton, you know, they come through and we need them, and those people down there are going to be very appreciative, because they're going to need a lot of money to get themselves back in shape and going. So, the people at Linton that's been donating, we really appreciate it, and anybody that hasn't, we'd ask you to stop by Regions and drop off a couple of bucks or whatever you can afford, but we appreciate it. Thank you, guys, Brad. Any other department heads or anybody have? Sean?
I just had a couple things, real quick. I was going to let you know, we've been doing some cleanup and salvaging some of the equipment down at the city garage here in the next several weeks. We're going to be doing some upgrades down there, replacing that fencing around the city garage, and they've already done, like I said, a lot of the cleanup and bag, you tell, looks a lot better on that east side of the property. And in the next few weeks, the decorative street light, the globes are going to be replaced, and the light bulbs are going to be replaced with the LED lights like we had done with the street lights. So in the next few weeks, you should see that taking place. That's all I got.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else?
Just keep up the good weather, we're getting a lot of golfers right now.
Okay.
I've got a comment, I mean, if you want to go ahead and add to it.
Pardon?
I just have a comment, it's kind of, Troy, I'm understanding you got a call the other day, maybe all these other making a ordinance up about a particular lady that's got like 40 cats at her house. Our city ordinance states that you can only own like three dogs, but we don't have an ordinance stating how many cats you can have at your house. And as Troy says, you can elaborate, go take it from there, Troy, but that's the problem when it goes to the house, there's nothing they can do about it.
The problem we get, got into was the dog protection, a colleague contacted me, is the case, and they said, hey, we got a situation down here where a couple's got, she was literally, she was, I stopped at 40, when I'm counting 40 separate cats, not counting any twice, and stopped when they started moving around at 40 and didn't even get to all the other places of the house. I know this has been kind of a problem in the past, it's not just this one issue, it's something that, you know, I don't know if it's just something, you know, no one really wants to admit that, you know, we have or whatever, but I think it would be beneficial, it would have helped her in that case, if we had an ordinance that stated you could only have X amount of cats, what that number is will be up to you guys, but hopefully much less than 40. It's just hard to be sanitary at all and have 40 cats living, you know, in your residence or house. The Board of Health obviously is going to be involved with us on this case, but we could have gotten, taken care of the situation much quicker if we had the ordinance against it and just went down there with our animal control and removing from residents, so...
Troy, I'm curious as to whether our nuisance ordinance might take care of that as a civil matter, based on health and safety?
Well, I, you know, I'm not sure, but it's inside their house, it's not like it's out in the open or in the public, so... I don't know that it'd be a nuisance to anyone else other than, you know, the rest of their health and safety, so, because they all got out.
I'll report to the city council and then provide some to them and you.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, I...
It would be your pleasure.
And I'll have another complaint on the animal ordinance too, when you get the address.
Then you and I can talk about what the other complaint is and...
Just, just a little bit, you know, we started a new park advisory board, a group of people that's concerned, you guys have brought up some great things today. You know, we want to, you know, perception of Linton cleanliness and making the parks look good, and also the, we're going to have the flowers downtown again on the, on the light poles, and with the new lighting, that'll be great. But also, there's a group that wants to spruce up the area, and if anybody's interested and volunteered to, we're going to work on the Triangle out here, maybe look into redoing the You Like Lenten signs, different things like that, so when people come in, strangers come into Linton perception, they're going to, they're going to see, you know, a nice clean town, and that's, that's what we're really hoping for. It's going to take a lot of work, but we've got a lot of great people that want, that start to volunteer, and so this may be one of the first public things we've actually said about that, but I'm excited about it, and I know the city park is looking better over the years, we've still got a long way to go. But anyhow, if anyone's interested in that, please contact me.
Can I say something on that note? A few years ago, the city, and David can probably elaborate on, gave $500 to the flowers. I was just wondering if maybe we could take that into consideration for next meeting, to donate $500 to the flower fund of our park board, so that we could help with the flowers.
Another will put out these 40, 40 baskets. Well, actually, Jeff Tong is in charge of it, and also talk to Brad back there, you know, and they're, you know, we're going to work with them, and they're going to help some as far as watering goes, because when you get that many, it gets a little overwhelming. We want this stuff to look really good, and we've had like George, and there's some other people out in the park that put out some great flower arrangements last year, park looked nice with that, and we want to continue on with that. We've had some other groups that's done that, and we want to expand on that, because again, the perception, when people come, you go to any town in the United States, you're on a trip, and you, one of the things, if you see their park or you see their downtown area, you'll get an idea of what that town's about, and if it's all rundown and dilapidated and it looks bad and things a little dirty, then that's what you think of the town. It's just, it's, and we're better than them, I know we can do this, and so we're excited about it. There's quite a few groups that's already showed in, so if anybody's got any interest in that, feel free to call me and get on board.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why is the restroom locked?
They, they...
Out the park, city hall.
I, I had, I was out there walking the other day, and I had to go, I found out that was out of season, because it said, it said on there, the sign said, it's open in season, and I didn't know.
Well, season should be...
Going to the bathroom was in season.
We'll get, we'll get that taken care of.
What is the real reason?
Well, basically, in the wintertime, and vandalism and stuff that we've got into in the past, and they, and in the wintertime, it's not used so much, so they, they shut it down.
Is there heat in there?
Huh?
Is there heat in there?
No, it's not heated, no. Freeze. Yeah, yeah. So, but it's also, right now with this weather and the way it is right now, yeah, it needs to be altered.
Okay, I'm just...
It's all being stepped and built.
Why you did it?
And the police department too, I think, don't you guys have something to do with that too?
We're just walking.
Yeah, walking, right. Well, it's all being stepped and built, okay.
Okay, any more comments? What do you like?
I've got something I'd like to bring up, please. I'm the lady with the 60 cats. No, I'm kidding. There's a situation I just wanted to bring to your attention that I thought was very poorly handled, and it put me in a, in a very unnecessary timbered bind. I, well, I guess to preface it, my dog's yapping out back and I'm working the electric meter reader guy or whatever, and it was coming around the back of my house, he just got there. And so I stick my head out the door and I said, what's up? And he said, well, your meter's dead. And he said, your electricity will be off for just one second, he says, it's got unplugged, you put a new one in and we're done. Well, he did, and he left. So I get my electric bill, and it's double, it was literally double. My bill, I live out in Shelton Estates, and it's usually about 140, which I know that's fantastic, my bill's over $280. And so I just marched up here, and I'm like, hey, what's going on with the, you know, my electric bill? They couldn't give me any reason or excuse or whatever, and so finally she got up, one of the girls here got, got this big binder down, had my name on the page, and said, dead meter, dead meter, dead meter, dead meter, for four or five months, my meter was dead. And they're calling up here and saying, hey, just estimated. So I'm ending up paying a double, you know, $140 that should have been spread out over the months. I mean, couldn't have got, you know, tied a note on a rock and thrown it on my porch or something, when you went by, read everybody else's meter and say, hey, you know, call it in or something? But four or five months, my meter was dead, because I saw it. And I'm not really upset about it, I just talk fast when I get going, but I'm not really upset about it, but I just thought it was very poorly handled. And if he's calling the girls and saying, hey, our meter's dead, estimated, why couldn't he call the girls and say, hey, our meter's dead, have her look at it and call it in?
Oh, we'll look into that, Mayor. That should not happen.
Appreciate it.
That, that should not happen. I mean, you should, that meter should not be dead for four or five months.
Absolutely, it shouldn't.
And I know there's, pardon, and it doesn't take that long to replace those meters.
He walked, no, he walked to my back door, he pulled it off, he put the new one on, and he left.
I will, I will be in the utility office first thing in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Because I, no, that, that shouldn't be. Thank you for coming.
I appreciate it.
Anything else?
Can I bring that up about blighted properties? Are you doing that, or are you going to bring that up, or is that a dead subject, or...
It's not dead, but it's...
It's not dead.
No, it's, no, what?
Well, I've been coming up here off and on for three years about property, and I get the same song and dance about, well, we got a board, it's our lawyers working on it, we can't do this, we can't do that. Meantime, one of your own councilmen, which I, he's doing a fantastic job for no longer he's been a councilman, he's trying to clean up the streets, and it don't do no good whenever all that trash blows over in this yard, and this house has got grass about this high, and it sticks there. They can't find out who owns the house. How you going, what are you going to do about that trash?
We are, okay.
There's more streets in this town than just Main Street, which I'm glad, when people drive through, as long as they stay on Main Street and go out by the park or out by the Triangle, the You Like Lenten sign, that's fine. But if they get off Main Street a block, here there, in the paper about a month ago, there's a, there are about the recycling trailers down here looking bad, and wanted to know if they could get more trailers. They ought to come down to my neighborhood and look at my neighborhood. I called a railroad and asked them if they could clean that up down on one way and the other. Never heard nothing back from them. They haven't read in the paper where they're getting all kinds of awards for doing this one, and that's good, that's, that's fine, they are, they're spending a lot of money, but they're going to make a lot of money. My neighbor has actually pushed trash to the back of his property with an in loader, and since then, he's, somebody tore a house trailer down somewhere, guess where they put it? On his property in his back, in the back of his house. Now, if it wasn't good enough to lay up wherever it came from, why is it good enough now to bring down there? I, I don't understand, the, some of the substations or trash blowing up the fences and stuff, I would pick it up if I, but you might go in somebody's yard and it might not be too well received.
What's the address of that property?
Glimmer Road, I don't know what the address is, it's right there at Railroad Tracks, you look, you can't miss it, just look.
There's a place on the, spill, you know, the spill.
Oh, okay. Okay, sir, we, a couple of weeks ago, we drove the whole city. Attorney and Linda, myself, we drove the whole city and looked at all these. We are working on blighted properties. We are, I will tell you, we're going to do it tomorrow, we have a couple of them we're working on right now, but it takes time to get all the information before you can do anything with these properties. But I think our ordinance is, is in place, I think that we can do some things, but we are working on it.
Most of the people, if you just write them a letter, you don't have to, you don't have to send the Troy down there, the police, and tell them to clean it up, or anything. Try that first, I, I don't, wouldn't think you'd need an ordinance to write a letter and tell you to clean some of the trash, pick up the trash. I mean, I, I understand there's people that, there's no, you don't, maybe you don't have the money to put siding or paint or roof your house, but you can walk around and pick up the trash once in a while, I would think, but the, and when this wind blows like it is now, it just, it just, it just, it just up down the street, you can take a wheelbarrow in my neighborhood and walk down, which I have, and pick up coke and people throw trash out and drive by, don't it, just like he said, well, you can't hardly catch them doing it, but that comes from someplace, it's out of the wind.
Mr. Troop is not exaggerating about his area. It's, we, we have looked at it, and I, I know who owns that property. If it's okay, I go down tomorrow and put it back in his ear.
Okay, cool, then.
After 10 years of that piece of property cleaned up and then, it doesn't have been well.
Start over and see what...
We'll try.
And there's a lot of people travel that road. During the Fourth of July, there's, there's people coming in from, you know, Jacksonville and Dover, they come down, down that road.
Linda will get back tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you. Nothing else? I have one more item I'd like to bring up. Our council meetings, when we have, I would like to change, not the date, I'd like to leave it on the second Monday, but I would like to start it at 6 o'clock instead of 7 o'clock. The reason, one of the reasons for that is that people from out of town, we have engineers and these folks accompany me in Appleson, Evansville, and we have our meetings now running, they're letting it in. Another thing is I've changed the order of works off of the second Monday night, it's going to be on the first Monday night, first Monday evening at 4 o'clock. So that would give us more time here to get our council business that we started at 6 o'clock.
Do you just want to vote, you need a motion or just?
I think I'd, I'd like to have a motion, so it's.
I, I make a motion, we move it to 6 o'clock, second Monday of the month.
Second, all of those in favor? Thank you. I have nothing else to come forward to council, everybody.
Yeah, I hear Jathan and everybody wanting to clean up, can we set up a pride day where we just go around and pick up trash from different groups and stuff?
We can try, I, it's, I, yeah, we've talked about that, Rod, it was very costly to do the whole city.
I don't mean let people bring all their stuff out, I mean, go out in the park and walk some of the streets and, and go pick up all the ditches and stuff, just blowing trash.
But we are looking at a, doing a section of the city each year, working on all the majors that, Tony?
Quick comment about that, I appreciate it, Rod. Why can't, when our city employees are driving around and they're picking up trash? You know, that's the only thing that happens. Piece of trash laying on the road, mopping around the street or something, you can't even stop going back to truck.
There you go, Rodney, you could be a leader.
I clean up out along the golf course all the time. I understand, I understand Dick's concern that lives on the highway, because we get it every day out there too.
If anything else to come forward to council?
Where you make all that trash, my railroad down my house comes from. I mean, it, it drives by that track.
Yep.